All right, I'm gonna welcome everybody to the September 2nd, 2025 meeting. If I could get approval of agenda, please.
So move, Chairman.
Second.
Second, in favor of I?
Aye.
Mr. Moses, would you be honored, do the honors for opening? You moved on it.
You got you?
Yes. Good evening. If y'all would, uh, bow our heads and ask God's blessing on tonight. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for the people gathered in this room. We thank you for volunteers and committed folks who want to see our county prosper. We just ask that you look upon us with, with your love and grace and give us the guidance that we need to do your work tonight. We just ask you to keep every citizen in Jones County safe and to help us all prosper and to bring a brighter tomorrow. These things are prayed in your name. Amen.
Amen.
And if we would, I pledge a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no refuge, just as God.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. All right, we'll be moving on to our planning and zoning section of the meeting tonight. And if anybody here tonight is opposition on any of these requests, you will get opportunity to speak.
Chairman, our first item this evening is a request by Paul Cheves. It's a request, a conditionally used to allow a single-family dwelling with metal siding. His property is located at 240 C Platoon Church Road. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
Okay. Mr. Chief, you wanna come forward? Just tell us a little bit what you're wanting to do and if the board has any questions for you.
All right, it's more or less like a barn dominium is what I'm after. Moving in, bought the property right next to my son, so trying to stay there with my son and my granddaughter.
I got you. Any questions for Mr. Chief?
I know the property, I think it's gonna be nice.
Anyone here tonight in opposition on this request? Anyone? If none?
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Second.
Second? All right, we've got a motion to second. Any discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, our next item is a request by Leroy Mahoney. It's a conditionally used to allow a single-wide. This is at 505 Mountain Springs Church Road. Property zone to add one. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
All right, Mr. Mahoney, are you here tonight?
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
How are you?
Just tell us what you're wanting to do and if that way the board has any questions for you.
Well, I purchased the property maybe three or four years ago, and it was a single-wide on the property when I purchased. And I just wanted to replace it with another single-wide for me and my wife.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mahoney? Anyone here tonight in opposition to this request? No one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, our final items, the request by the Board of Commissioners to begin the text amendment process, creating sections 32.24, 73.13, and 96.7 of the CLDR. This is to allow data centers as a conditional use in the C1 district. Planning Commission recommended approval of the amendment with the staff comments that are contained in the staff report, and then also created a new section called 96.7.19, Environmental Impact Study. You've been provided with that staff report, and there's been numerous comments on the environmental impact study, and you've got three different drafts of that that have been presented to you.
Any questions from the board?
One question, does this have to be voted on tonight?
No, sir.
I'd like to take time to look at it, Chairman, what we've put on, still hear from them.
Sure. Any one? Anyone for this? Anyone against it, want to come forward and speak? If not, we'll table it for the next one.
No, I wanted to table it too, so we can read over what the consent.
Motion to postpone, Chairman.
Second.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor of I?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to consent agenda and approval for minutes. We had a August 19th, we had the third Tuesday, an executive session. On August 22nd, we had a call meeting and a public hearing on the 28th of August along with a call meeting on August. If y'all had opportunity to review the minutes, I'll entertain a motion. A motion, second. Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I? As have it. All right, now, Mr. Martin, you've got local preference bid on the new business.
You know, essentially, Chairman, I thought years ago that we had approved this, and at the end of the day, it was to give our contractors and our local business professionals the opportunity to bid. They may not have the economies of scale or some of the luxuries that some of the other larger firms have, and it allowed us to go X percentage over, which was typically, I want to say 5%, over the bid amount, recognizing that they shop local, they spend local, they would use local fuels, local resources, they employ people locally, and they pay taxes here. And we saw that as an intrinsic benefit of the local preference. So with that being said, again, I thought we had it, but since we don't, I wanted to recommend that we employ this strategy across our bidding departments, or at least create the vehicle for which our departments can allow local preference.
That'd be something we need to let legal handle in the form to do it correctly.
And I don't think it's allowed any federal or state-funded projects. It would only be local, county-funded, completely county-funded projects if you all decided to do it.
So LBI, stuff like that would...
You cannot do local preference on any of those?
Any thoughts on that? Did you know that?
Chairman, I agree wholeheartedly with the local preference. My issue would be putting a percentage amount to it.
Right.
I've created a couple of evaluations in my day job where you give points for it, higher points for local preference instead of percentage, because eventually what percentage will do will restrict competition. You'll have people say, well, if I gotta beat the next guy by five, seven percent, I'm not gonna bid. Less competition gets us less, you know, deals for the county. But I do believe in exactly what you said, that, you know, local folks are paying taxes here, they're living here, they got a vested interest in this community. So while I do agree with it, I think if we create an evaluation metrics, then, you know, and put maybe five points, so 25 points if you're local, you can only get 20 if you're not local. So you got a preference there in the scoring part of it instead of the dollar part of it. That way, it makes them all be competitive.
Anything else?
Nope. I just know that we have the ability to accept the best bid, not necessarily the lowest bid. And I know we've done it before on tractors and other equipment, because it was a favor of maybe John Deere over Kubota, and the John Deere costs more. So I've seen us do that. And so with regard to it being a point preference, because somewhere in some statute, we can't do that monetarily on federal and other state projects, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Is this the one that y'all had years before? Is this a new one, Jason?
So the one that's on page 46 right there, that's, that was kind of the last draft we had. This was back in 2017 that we explored this, that the board explored it, and this was kind of the last draft. And so in this version, there on page 46, the local was defined as Jones County and then any county that we share a border with. And then this was set up with the percentage-type system where under 25,000, they must be within 5% of the lowest responsible bidder. Over 25,000, they had to be within 2.5%. We did have the language in there about state or federal funding that wouldn't apply to those. Let's see. But yeah, this was, this was just a draft from back then, and ultimately, the board decided at that time not to include that in the final version.
I mean, other than the percentage amounts, I was good with most of the other things in here. I'm glad to see that's a relevant or recent draft.
What does the board want to do?
Can we postpone to get, never ever try to the next meeting?
So on that, we just want to reword the percentage language so that it's like a point-scoring system where you get extra points for being in one of those counties?
Okay.
And you can make the percentage points the same as the percentage dollar amounts and, you know, something like that.
Okay. Might get a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone until the next meeting.
Second.
Second? All in favor of I?
Aye.
As have it. Commissioner Wood, you've got a coroner's plan.
Yes, sir. I was gonna present this tonight, and right now, our coroner's office is, we were talking about the on-call, you know, what they're paid per call and then, so to speak. Right now, for an on-call, when a person passes away, they're called out, they get $175 for going out and handling the call. That's been the same rate for 34 approximate years. That's before we had this building, before the county used this building, so put it, you know, over three decades ago. Five-year average is 95 approximate calls a year, and you remember COVID was an uptick in calls, so, and the cost per year is about 16, a little over 16.6. What I'm proposing to do is, if you remember back, state legislature last year, it went through the House, and it died in committee at the State Senate, they were gonna make the minimum rate 250 per call and $100 per day on-call for the deputy coroners. Now, if they had a death call, that $100 goes away, and then they handle, you know, the call for 250. That is an increased, you know, amount of money needed for their budget. It would increase the rough, it would be 34, 125 additional funds needed for that department. Let's see. The coroner, the elected coroner would not be eligible for the $100 a day on-call fee, but he would be able to get the 250 if he worked a death call. He would get the 250 if so approved. But I think this is very fair. And many counties pay much more than this, and I think it's much needed and long overdue. And on another note, the, when this salary and payroll evaluations were done, the coroner's office was not, you know, evaluated, so they're just kind of just bringing things and making them right for these employees and giving them what's needed, because it's not just a one-hour deal. If it's, unfortunately, if a child passes away and you got, there's a whole list of steps, may have to have a reenactment, you may have to have, with DFAX, DA's office, there's a whole list of things that's gonna be, could be 40 hours tied up in one case. I'm just saying, it gets very involved in the things they do, so. But I'll present that tonight and just...
Any question?
I believe we do have the coroner here and deputy coroners, if they have any, you know, want to come up and say anything on, you know, support of it.
Jason Moye? There was a lot of talk about this during the last session, like John talked about. And a lot of the confusion was around, some of the coroners are paid based off of a state salary level, and then other ones are local preference, so local, how they do it locally. Didn't we look at some studies on that, what other counties were doing?
So I know the coroner's paid on a, based on a formula in state law, and so we get a guidebook from HCCG every year that kind of takes you through how you calculate that. And then the deputy coroner, state law sets out a minimum, and it's the 175. And so counties are free to go above that minimum if they so choose.
Right. And, you know, I look forward to be presented, you know, in the state legislature this next year, and hopefully it'll pass, but it, I won't get into all the details of why it died in committee, but if it had made, ever made it to the Senate floor, I believe it would have passed unanimously. We're pretty close to it.
We know why I wasn't looked at during...
I don't know. I don't know.
Did we, I got this question, did we ever provide them with a car for when they're on-call?
We're working on that. We have one that still has to be turned in from the fire department, and that'll be turned over to them.
In terms of our neighbors, where are they in terms of fee per call?
So I searched back through, I think maybe we had talked about this one time before. I found some emails, and I sent out a thing on the listserv that I'm part of, and really the only response I got back was from Monroe County, and they said 175.
I had Wilkerson County, hold on, let me get back. I know that Wilkerson, I think, was higher than what we pay.
My first reaction is based on where we were salary-wise in the county when we did this salary study. You would think that they were probably not paid on a higher rate than everybody else being behind, you know, market prices, market rates.
The coroner's salary is 24,000 and the 175 per call. So the per-call is still the same, but the average salary is more...
You have to remember how many times the various other boards in the county or employees have been raised in the last 34 years, and I'm trying to, because it's a lot of time it takes meeting with family, and a lot of times on the family's worst day, you know, these are the individuals that go out professionally, talk to that family, and console them, and, you know, we have some very good people in this county, and I, you know, other counties pay a salary to even the deputy coroners, provide a vehicle, provide, you know, so it's a, it's all across the board. I just don't like paying the bare minimum. And if next year, the state legislature does what they need to do, we'll be ahead of that power curve, and go ahead and we'll be at the minimum next year. So I'm trying to, trying to correct something that's been the same for 34 years, because I don't know of anything today that I can buy for the same price as 34 years ago or pay for at the same rate.
More comments or questions?
And this is the new proposed new rate?
Correct. And like I said, like the deputy coroners, they would be eligible, if they're on-call for a week, they would get $100 a day for the on-call fee, but if they had a death call, that $100 goes away, just as, you know, states here in the paper. Now, coroner, the elected coroner would not be eligible for any of the $100 a day on-call, because he already receives, you know, county check monthly, but he would be able to get 250 for working a death call. So it's approximately, you know, based on the last five-year average, it would be estimated of 34, 125, and that's just estimated based on calls. You have to remember, we've had more calls throughout the COVID years and possibly in years before that.
So, but, so these recommended new rates are just, they're just numbers that came from out there? We don't have anything to go with?
No, that was based on the minimums that the state legislature was working on. It died in the Senate Committee at the State Capitol. And that's what their proposal was going to be, is 250 per death call minimum. Counties could pay more, but that was the minimum amount, then $100 a day on-call. That keeps, that keeps the deputy coroner close to the county and gives them some...
And that was, that would have been a statewide recommendation regardless of county size, number of calls, anything.
Correct.
So if somebody had 100 calls a week, they wouldn't want this deal.
Yeah. Well, I don't, yeah, it'd be bad, but if that happened. But yes, this will be the...
Well, not if they're getting paid 250 per call.
I meant a locked-in deal, yeah. They only had one call, you know, instead of having a set salary, or a minimum salary. I agree that we probably need to up our prices, no doubt. I just, I have concern without having some, something to go on, like what other counties are doing, because if we're the only county at 250 and everybody else is still at 175, I would like, I'd like to see what a good number it is.
I'm gonna call Mr. Wayne Greer up. He is, you know, he goes to deputy coroner, the coroner's training, he, I'm sure he talks with his peers across the state and knows more so than what the other counties might be doing.
Mr. Chairman, the 250 passed unanimously through the House. They've tried it for two years. It was four dissenting votes. Went to the Senate, the committee, one of our local senators, for some reason, he didn't like it. He's done it for two years, he and I've had a very animated conversation about that. But for 34 years, $175, and they're just trying to set a minimum at the state. And most of the counties that run more calls than we do, they're already on salary. This doesn't apply to them. As a matter of fact, Representative Ware from Dawson County, who presented this, or Dawsonville, excuse me, he said, "It doesn't apply to my coroner. He's salaried, his deputies are salaried, it doesn't even apply to them." And for instance, Leon and his bunch, and doesn't apply to them at all. Doesn't affect them. It's just basically for us little guys, it gets us to where, when we were paying 94 cents a gallon or 80 cents a gallon 34 years ago, now I'm paying $3 a gallon. If I have to go to Juliet, I'm getting the same thing if I went next door. And we're the ones who are in the middle of the night doing things no one else wants to do. People who've been deceased for weeks, and sometimes even months, we're the ones who are out there, and we just want to be paid equitably. And 34 years, man, that's a long time.
It's like I said, I don't...
We're not doing it for money.
Right. I don't know of anything you could buy today the same price as 34 years ago. And I know we, anytime, you know, I love our sheriff's office, anytime they come and say, hey, we need more money, we give it to them. Very few questions asked, and this is a, in 34 years, you know, I'm presenting a raise to this, to the deputy coroners and, you know, because they...
Normal call for us is 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, return home 3:30, 4 o'clock. We're not making any money with this. I love what I do. And I want to keep doing it, but I can't keep on and basically almost losing money when I'm on-call, no money at all, have to stay home all weekend, can't go out of the county. We don't have any calls like this past weekend, the weekend before I was on-call, no calls, no money. It's not, I don't like to use the word fair, because life is not fair, but it is not right.
Chairman, I, no, no question. I just want to be clear that I'm, I'm very supportive of the increase.
Sure.
I just don't know that, I mean, are we talking, do the other counties get 250 with no car? Because if we start, if we're talking about a car, then the fuel goes out the window, because we'll be paying for the gas. And I'm just looking at a $35,000 a year increase, and then we give them vehicles and we pay for the gas, we're now talking 40, 50,000. If that's fair and equitable for what they do, absolutely. I'm 100% behind it, because I do believe that 34 years at a stagnant rate is not right. I think we need to do something. I just don't know that just using the arbitrary, and I don't say arbitrary, but the number that the state has used and failed, you know, is it, what was the failure? And I know the senator that didn't want, there's reasons for that, but, you know...
Well, most of the counties who run many more calls than we do already have called, and are paid more than we're paid, they already have automobiles. And as far as I know, we're the only county in the circle that I deal with who have automobiles, and many of the other counties pay more. I have no idea what be a pace, because it's a salary.
So I wasn't privy to these conversations. What's our senator's issue with...
I wish I knew, bro.
I thought you said...
Here's what he told me.
Okay.
He told me he was not going to support an unfunded mandate, okay? Title, is it 45? Title 45 mandates the counties to have coroners. That is an unfunded mandate. I mean, I'm not real smart, but I know what an unfunded mandate is, and the state's already done that. And the last time, they set a minimum 34 years ago at $175. And we've got a lot of support. The senator who did not support us was quoted as having said, someone told me, "If it makes it to the floor, he will not vote against it." So I deal with him a lot. So we're not asking for a lot.
No, you're not.
No, it's minimal.
But we just, you know, we appreciate you considering it. We do request you favorably consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
May I ask a question?
Anything for the board?
Come to the podium.
Come to the podium, introduce yourself.
You have to come and tell us who you are and your address.
But is the 175...
Hold on just a second.
You gotta tell us your name, your address.
Pardon me, Lee Stout, 325 River North Boulevard. Is the 3, is the 175 a per-death amount that these folks are getting paid?
Yes, ma'am. And it's, and I think, as he mentioned, the average call, he might get 11 or 12 o'clock at night, get home at 3:00 or 4:00.
Right.
Like I said, in certain cases, he'd have to meet with DFAX, DA...
The family.
Crime Center, GBI, Sheriff's Office. It turns into, could turn into 40 hours for one call.
Gotcha. Because I think, I think the kind of rule of thumb is every decade, the value, maybe I shouldn't say this, but the value of a dollar doubles. So 34 to 44 would be 175 times 2, and then whatever that is, because I'm not fast enough on my feet. So I just wanted clarification on that.
I think what you're trying to say is if the 175 had been upped over the years and kept up with inflation, it would be much more than 250, is I think kind of what you're getting at.
Yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
Right.
So what's the board want to do?
And Jason, we have this in the county coffers to increase this budget line item for the coroner's office.
We could, I don't know where exactly to tell you we'll pull it from, but we can find it if the board chooses to do that.
That was my question. Thank you.
Do we need more, I mean, feedback from other counties just to see? I mean, I don't know. I'm kind of grabbing for straws here to figure out how, I know what the, you know, what the state came up with.
This is something I've been considering for quite a while, and I finally, you know, have brought it to the board's attention for consideration on increasing. All right, well, if it's, if you're gonna entertain a motion, I'll make one tonight. So I will make a motion that we increase the per-call fee for the coroner's office to 250 with $100 a day on-call fee for the deputy coroners, and that we understand that the $100 fee will not apply if there's a call, a death call for, you know, during that period time.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Just to clarify that there's $250 a day.
Correct. The $250 per call, right, is what I'm saying.
And $100 a day.
For on, for the, just the...
Being on-call.
For on-call for the deputy coroners. The coroner is not eligible to receive the $100 a day, because he has already paid.
So what do we determine between, and I know this is gonna sound like I'm argumentative, but I want clarity, who's on-call?
They set their schedules. They set the schedule. We have two deputy coroners.
So this is just weekends that we're having?
No, this is, they set their own schedule in their office.
So, so the numbers that we're looking at here, though, is 365 days times 100. If the coroner's not eligible for the $100, then he's never on-call.
Two-thirds of 365.
Right, that coroner is not eligible for the $100 a day on-call fee.
Well, 100 times 365 is 365, if I'm adding right, so.
I think you take in the number of death calls and apply that to it also, because you, you may have two death calls in a day, it may be three days, it may be three weeks to your next one. So, but this is a five-year average, if I'm correct.
So I'm just clarifying, the $100 a day for the deputy coroner's two-thirds of the year.
I believe, Jason, you weren't mad on the numbers for this page.
For 243 days a year, unless there's a death call.
Yep.
And Jason, you work with Matt on the numbers for this page? So y'all checked and cross-checked?
So I just got the ninety-five calls per year, Wayne gave me the ninety-five calls per year number, and so that, that's what I used to kind of create all this. So I did the three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year times the one-hundred, assuming there would be somebody on call each day, so you could probably...
But a third of the year is Matt.
Okay.
So you have, you have to take out a third of the year, which leaves you with the two-hundred-and-forty-three days. Two-thirds of the year is two, whatever. Two-forty-three point three is two-thirds of a year.
And then you get the...
And then you subtract ninety-five from what you have left. On average, that's the number of calls, because there's a night that nobody's going to get the hundred dollars, so you subtract two-forty, ninety-five, one-two-four-three, and then that would give you times one-hundred.
Yeah.
We're sitting around with sixty so far this year, so that's exactly between ninety and a hundred. We're a part of, that's what we...
I'm good. I just wanted to clarify, because when I do a budget amount...
Right, we got to put that number in.
It's like trying to figure out gravel, how much gravel you can put on road a year. You don't know. It's, yeah, it's going to be a lot, but it's, you don't know, it's rainy season and all that, it's going to be a lot, but it's, you know, the least numbers this guy runs, the better.
All right, I'm good, chairman. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye. 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 That apartment heads. Matt, you want to say anything? Your only apartment head sitting in the audience. Elected one at that.
No, thank y'all for just considering it, and just taking it and pushing through, and John, thank you for picking up the door.
All right, you're welcome.
Jason, do you have anything?
No, sir.
What? All right, citizen comments? Any citizens like to come forward tonight?
I would.
Sure.
Do I have to announce myself again?
Oh, come on.
Okay, I just would like to know, of course, I'm with an animal rescue group locally, or a couple of them actually, and I'd like to know how we can get a copy of Jerry Collins' report that was done as an independent evaluate, I don't exactly know what it was called, but of that report.
I mean, it's public records, so I mean, yes, you can get it.
Who do I...
And I apologize, I hadn't answered your text yet. I got about four or five I hadn't answered.
You probably have four hundred you haven't answered, but, sorry.
I've been, I've been grandbaited.
Oh.
Yeah, that kind of takes precedent.
Who do I...
I know it's written about the same way the tax board papers were written, so it's very...
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
It's very, yeah, I don't think it...
I don't, I don't believe there's anything that would need to be redacted.
It is, we could redact any of that, right?
I don't think there's anything in there like that.
Ashley, do I need to get it from you?
I don't have an electronic, did he send us an electronic version?
Well, we can...
I think that's the way...
Get on the copier and make it.
We just need to ask him for the electronic version, and it can be emailed to you.
Okay, all right. We'll email it and request it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? About commissioner comments? Commissioner Martin, you want to start?
I'm good.
You don't seem good.
I know you've been riding.
I'm good, thank you.
You go.
It's great to have a long weekend.
Mm-hmm.
The weather was great in the mountains. I hope everybody got to enjoy a peaceful weekend, and those that were working for us, thank you for all you do. Those that are in here that are with my animal people, thank y'all for all y'all do, too, my fosters. I get the luxury of watching Rebecca reform a beautiful stallion that was rescued from another county, and it's beautiful. You would fall in love with it.
And I don't mean to say it. My husband has cut me off from horse anymore.
What he don't know won't hurt him.
He would see it pulling in the driveway.
You can say it was donated.
You've got extra stall.
No.
Yes.
Careful.
Once again, I have a nine-one-one now on my phone. We need to teach people that nine-one-one is not for if I stumped my toe or because I'm sick, and that, you know, we really need to teach people that an ambulance is not for a cold, it's not for all of those things, and I'm going back to when I was an EMT paramedic, and it was abused at that time, too, but we've got to educate people that they can go to the emergency room or urgent care, it's much quicker than the emergency room by ambulance. And, you know, there are real things that truly happen, that somebody may be life-threatening in while we're hung up on somebody with the sniffles. So I will preach that one probably till the day I die, because that's probably how long it'll still be going on.
All right. Mr. Wood?
All right. This past Sunday, I took a nice scenic drive through the north end of our county, as I normally do on various days of the week, but I went up and looked over the Union Hill Church Road Bridge project, which is well underway, and I always want to give a shout-out to Tim Ingram for designing a good bridge. They haven't laid the bridge decks yet, but each north and south side of the bridge I call is poor, they're waiting on the, I think, the pre-cast members to be delivered, so it was a shout-out to Gregory Bridge, and then Tim Ingram for designing a good setup out there. That's all I have.
Mr. Kishin?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, Reed Bean should be there around lunch tomorrow. Okay. About Thursday.
Excellent, thank you.
You will.
So they're going to set them on Thursday? Or they're going to set them tomorrow?
They're going to start setting them tomorrow.
I take a trip.
You can...
They're going to start setting them tomorrow, I don't think they're not, but it's going to be a schedule, we'll start around one.
You can see the large crane well before you get there. It's out towering over the trees.
Mr. Kishin?
I'll just say thank you to all our employees, staff members. Shout-out to Jerry and his Public Works crew, he's not cutting any trash, he's cutting all grass.
He's not doing graffiti anymore?
Doing a fine job, no, doing a fine job.
That's funny, because yesterday...
He's not there picking it up.
I wonder about somebody's house the other, yesterday, only way home, and no why? The homeowners are eager, whoever does their lawn service had cut all the trash off the road, and it was just shrouded all over their yard, and I was like, oh my God. But it wasn't us.
All right, if we get a motion adjourned, go into executive session for personnel and real estate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
May I say one last thing now that you guys have adjourned?
Yeah.
Union Hill Church, oh my God, have you guys, this is this teeny little church, and I kind of grew up there, so I'm very excited that that bridge, because, I mean, Chris, you know, that was a treacherous journey from the farm over to Union Hill.
That was, that's a historic ride through there, across that antique wood bridge. I miss it.
Okay, so that's one word for it.
I drove a bus across it.
God bless you.
Yes.
And the other thing is...
I haul logs across that thing before.
I'm a member of the Jones County History and Heritage Group, and anyone who knows the history of like the Union Hill Church Bridge, come and join our group. We would, we would love to have you in here. Although I don't see anybody that's younger than me in this room, that would be...
All right, what are you saying?
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, crap, I can't believe I just made an enemy of her. Anyway, so Jones County History and Heritage, thank you.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.